You're good to go.
Very good. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block. I'm the Vice Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have public comment, particularly after the the public hearing when we discuss the question about preserving trees in town, which we'll come to shortly. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Natasha Spada.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Marty Jacobs.
Present.
And for the record, I, Adam Block, am also present. Paul Alpert, our Chair, is out this evening. And so I will be chairing tonight's meeting on his behalf. For others participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov. Again, that's needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I'll introduce each of our speakers on our agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked for any comment or questions or motions. When the opportunity arises for public comment and you are called upon, we ask that you restate your name and your address for the record. The other ground rule for, special ground rule for this evening is that some of you know, my wife is at her book club tonight. And so as a result, I'm on double duty as both father and chairing tonight's proceedings. So in the event I have to take a moment to recess, I'll let you know. And we may have an interruption from a happy nine-year-old. Assuming he's happy, the interruption should be brief. With that, I would like to call this meeting to order. And in particular, I'd like to call, I'd like to open our public hearing for major project site plan special permit 2021-03 with respect to Needham Nutrition LLC of Knight regarding the property at 915 Great Plain Avenue is the petitioner. And with that, I think at this time, I'd like to ask Evans to begin his presentation and/or Mr. Pures. I'm not sure if I've pronounced your name correctly. So Evans, how would you like to start the dance?
On wave reading the legal notice first.
I apologize. Thank you, Lee. Can I have a motion, please, to waive the reading of the notice of hearing?
Don't move. Sorry. Sorry. I missed it.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. All in favor, please respond in the affirmative. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Natasha Spada.
Hi.
And the Chair is I. So we, the vote carries and I think we can now open the hearing. And at that point, I think I'll ask Evans and Leslie directs me otherwise for you to begin your presentation.
Thank you. So yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Needham Nutrition LLC. The principal of Needham Nutrition LLC is Mr. Adelson Perez, who was with us. The owner of the property is 905 Great Plain Avenue LLC. Mr. Ken Mackin is here on behalf of the owner. So the, it's a fairly simple application and probably the smallest project that you will ever see. It qualifies as major project site, site plan review. This is at 915 Great Plain Avenue. And it's at the corner of Great Plain and Pickering. It's a three-unit building and we propose to be occupying the space on the left of the building as you're facing it. The reason this is here before you for major project site plan review is because of parking. Since we're in the center business district, any change in use that results in an increase in calculated parking demand of 10 spaces or more automatically qualifies as a major project regardless of the size of the project or what's involved. In this case, the previous occupant was a retail store, which for this small space would require three parking spaces. We are proposing, Needham Nutrition is proposing to open a retail establishment that serves protein drinks, nutrition drinks, energy drinks, and things of that sort for consumption on or off the premises, which means that it qualifies as a takeout establishment that automatically requires 10 spaces under the bylaw. And there will be a small, small retail component to this as well, which results in another three spaces. And then because this is serving drinks, you also have to calculate one parking space for each three seats inside. There will be seven seats inside for people to use while they're either waiting for their order to be filled, or if they want to sit there and drink their drinks. And so that requires another three spaces. All told, that calculates to 16 spaces, which is an increase of 13 spaces over the previous use, which is why this qualifies as a major project. Nothing else about this remotely resembles a major project. There's not going to be any change to the facade, just interior renovations and changing the layout. The board will be interested to know, I'm sure, that the other two tenants have previously gotten special permits, one from this board and one from the zoning board of appeals waiving compliance with the parking requirements. There is a dental office there, which has a calculated parking requirement of 13 spaces and a martial arts studio, which has a calculated parking requirement of 10 spaces. There are two or three spaces in the back, but there is no, not sufficient onsite parking for any of the tenant occupants. So those special permits were granted, one by this board and one by the ZPA back in 2015. And so the analysis was sort of similar in those cases as to why the special permit should be granted. The expected hours of operation for this business to start out will be Monday to Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on Saturdays, 10 to 2. That's the anticipated starting hours. It's hoped that as the business grows and is successful, there could be a need to have longer hours on Saturday. So if the board is inclined to grant special permit, we would ask that it allow operation on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., even though we don't intend to initially do that. So that if and when we expand to those hours, we don't need to come back for an amendment to the special permit. The expected staff is two to three people. It's a small space. You can't really fit a lot of staff in there. But similarly, if the business is really successful, it's conceivable that they might need four staff. So again, if the board is inclined to grant our special permit, we would ask that it allow for up to four staff, even though we do not anticipate actually having four staff there, certainly not to start. Possibly never. So and with respect to parking, the applicant is committed to getting parking stickers for the municipal lot for all staff employees. So this modest project does require several special permits. One is just the site plan review special permit. Another is the site plan special permit pursuant to 3.2.2 of the bylaw for a business in the center business district. There's no description in the bylaw for a smoothie or nutrition drink establishment, but the description that most closely resembles what Needham Nutrition is planning to operate is retail sales of ice cream, frozen yogurt, or similar products for consumption on or off the premises. And we feel that that description reasonably closely resembles what we are proposing here. We also need a special permit pursuant to 3.2.2 to allow more than one use on the lot. As I mentioned, there are already two other uses in this building, both of whom have gotten the special permit pursuant to that section of 3.2.2 to allow more than one use on the lot. And lastly, we need, or we are requesting a special permit pursuant to 5.1.1 and 5.1.6 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence to the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.2. And in this case, the one that's most directly applicable is 5.1.1.6 special permit in the center business district. That section says that it's the Planning Board may grant special permit for the center business district to waive strict adherence with the requirements, the parking requirements. If the proposed project file satisfies the following conditions, it replaces or substantially approves an existing building or site, it is replacing a prior use in the same location. Does it promote the goal of preserving and enhancing the center business district as a pedestrian-oriented local shopping and business district? We think it does. It's the kind of place that people, we hope, will want to stop in while they are walking around the downtown area, shopping, or going and sitting in the town, on the town green. And in fact, we anticipate that most of the patrons will be people who are already in Needham Center for some other purpose. Either they're working there or, you know, they've come in and they're parked somewhere else, you know, because they're shopping. So we certainly see this as preserving and enhancing the center business district as pedestrian-oriented. The next criteria is that it incorporates the recommendations of the DRB. We haven't been in front of the DRB because we're not proposing any change to the facade. And we haven't proposed any signage yet. We understand that when we do, we're going to have to go in front of the DRB, but at the moment, we haven't done that. And lastly, that it demonstrates that it is providing the maximum number of off-street parking spaces practicable. Well, we don't have any off-street parking to offer. But obviously, that's true of many buildings in this, in this part of downtown. And there is significant substantial off-street, or not off-street parking, but on-street parking on Great Plain and on Pickering Street around the corner, as well as there's some, a couple of municipal lots that the entrances are on Dedham Avenue, but not far away. And if you're parked in the lots, one in particular, the one that's behind Needham Pizza, you can, you can access this part of Great Plain Avenue fairly easily. So for those reasons, we believe that we meet the criteria for the waiver of the parking requirements. And we would ask that the board grant the special permit that we're requesting.
Thank you very much, Evans. Do you have any other members of your group also have any comments or to present any other materials?
No, Mr. Perez is here. He's the, he's the owner of Needham Nutrition. He's here simply to answer questions if you have any. Mr. Mackin is here. He's here on behalf of the owner slash landlord, primarily to show that he approves of and supports this proposal. And again, if you have any questions, it would be appropriate to direct to the landlord. He can, he can address those for you.
Thank you very much. I will note for the record, in addition for your, to the application that you've submitted, we also have your letter dated August 20th, as well as your letter dated August 13. That explains the background of the application, the applicant, the business, the hours, and the relevant sections of the zoning bylaw that relate to your request for a special permanent relief.
Yes.
We is the application otherwise in order?
The application is order, is in order, and I think, and also we have comments from the town departments that reviewed the application.
Yeah. So I understand from the, from the fire department and the police department, they have no comment. There is comment specifically. I'm not sure, Evans, if you've seen from the Department of Health, have you seen their comment?
Yes, I've seen that. And also, by the way, I think the engineering department had no comment. But, but the, the Board of Health did have a comment relating to dumpsters and relating to a grease trap if appropriate. There isn't going to be, the kinds of, of drinks that are going to be prepared onsite are not going to result in any grease. So a grease trap's not going to be necessary. There will be a need for a recycling dumpster. There's already a dumpster onsite. But our expectation is that the, the great majority of the trash, for lack of a better word, that would be generated would be recyclable. And so we will be making arrangements for a recycling receptacle. And, and then determining, hopefully, that we can enter into an arrangement with the other tenants regarding sharing the the other dumpster, because we don't anticipate making a lot of use of the non-recycling component of throwing away trash.
And, and your client, I presume, will agree to abide by the conditions set out by the Board of Health?
Of course.
Correct. I will, they did bring that up. I will, even though I don't deal with grease, but I will probably install a grease trap just for if that's, if that's a requirement, if it's mandatory, if it's safer, if it's just a better option, just to to make everything much smoother, I will do that.
It's a funny thing with, with the business that says Needham Nutrition, we probably wouldn't otherwise expect grease in the business.
Of course.
You know, we appreciate your willingness to do so if it's an absolute requirement based on the, effectively, the product that you're serving. So other than that, I'd like to now turn to turn to the board and ask if anyone has any comments, either Jean. Do you have any comments?
I have a few questions. I understand from the letters, Mr. Huber, that there are three spaces on the property. Are they allocated in some way to the other tenants or already taken into account in prior permits? Where waivers were granted based on the three spaces being available for those other occupants?
That question is exactly why Mr. Mackin is here, because I'm sure he can answer that better than I can.
Yes, thank you. So two of the spaces are allocated to the karate studio and one space is allocated to the dentist. And the two spaces are actually tandem spots. So there's only three spots in the rear of the property.
Okay, so two spaces for the exercise studio, I forget the right word, but and the other one space for the dentist.
Correct.
And I understand that a condition that the manager and the employees be provided with spaces in the town parking lot per the usual arrangement in the downtown that will be complied with, as Mr. Huber said. I'm, just so I can visualize, what was the prior retailer in this space?
I was looking, I was looking on Google Maps, really a remarkable thing. And I'm looking at a picture of it right now on another screen, and I think it's called Mostly Gray. It looks like.
Mostly gray.
It was, it was a what? A dress shop?
Yes.
It was a female retail. Boutique.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Adam.
It was a retail boutique that focused on female merchandise.
Okay. All right. Was it part of that business that has several storefronts that sells fine quality used clothing? No, it just stood on its own. Okay, thank you for reminding me. It's funny, I never noticed the place. Okay. And then another, all right, we already talked about solid waste. Yes. Oh, another thing is is there handicapped parking along the street where this built, where this useful front? Where would handicapped persons park to use this? This establishment? Anybody know? Mr. Mackin, do you know?
My recollection, the nearest location, there's no handicap metered spaces. And there are no handicap spaces on Pickering Street from the field towards Great Plain Avenue. The nearest handicap spaces would be the Walgreen parking lot off of Great Plain Avenue. In fact, even the town spaces for the buddy spaces, I'm not aware of any handicap spaces that the town has over there. But perhaps Lee may have a, some insight on that.
Yeah, I, you know, being one who takes handicapped people out to restaurants now and then, I think it's very important that they have access. And I'm wondering, of course, it's really the responsibility of the town if handicapped parking space is thought to be needed on the street to, to, to put that there. But I just thought perhaps you'd know that, oh yeah, there's one right there. It's so handy. Apparently not, though. Okay. Those were.
It was possible, though, the, the spaces that you have either on Pickering Street or Great Plain, it would be accessible with a little bit of an effort to get someone out onto the street. And there certainly are curb cuts on the corner of the property, Pickering and Great Plain, that a wheelchair could make it up onto the sidewalk and then into the business. That's certainly a possibility.
Is there parking, I think the only parking on Pickering is, isn't it true, is on the Greensfield side of the street?
That's correct. It's, it's un-metered. So it's available and generally it's available at most hours of the day, except for Saturday mornings when the Y is running the program.
And sometimes after school on a nice day, when people like me are bringing their grandchildren.
Yeah.
It can be hard to find a podcast, believe it or not. But all right. So I, I know that area well and I guess those are my questions. You know, to mention handicap spaces in Walgreens, I imagine, of course, if a person really had a need, they would go ahead and use it and nothing, you know, that nobody would complain, but you know, those spaces are, you're only supposed to use them if you're shopping at Walgreens. I'm sure you know that, Mr. Mackin.
That's right.
Yeah. And then I guess there was one thing kind of in the back of my head. We're also considering putting before our zoning bylaw an expansion of outdoor seating. And it's, it may be that the select board through these new outdoor seating rules that town meeting may pass might allow outdoor, more outdoor seating in this block. And of course, if that does, they'll have to take into consideration the factors, including the need for parking of, you know, all of the businesses in the block. But I would certainly not want to see outdoor spaces on, on your side of the street. I mean, I just can't imagine it would be safe to have outdoor spaces on both sides of the streets. So do you have any expectation, Mr. Perez, that you will be seeking outdoor seating? Or do you think your patrons will be satisfied to go over to Greensfield or the Town Common if they want to enjoy their beverage outside?
They can do that. I did look at the location to see if it was something that would be suitable, but I mean, there is a, that besides my, the building I have 15 and the brick and the building next is just an alleyway. And I'm looking at it right here. It's I don't really see it there. I think they'll either grab to go or just enjoy it next to the park nearby.
Is that alleyway private? Or it's not a public way, is it?
It's not public. It's a shared alleyway between my property and the next building, and we each own to the center line or five feet on each side.
So I suppose if, if both owners agreed and that alleyway wasn't already required to be remain, to remain open for the conditions of another permit, it's, it's possible it could be outdoor seating there. All right. I'm, I was just thinking about that issue.
It would be, it would, it would have been nice, but yeah, that is a great point. It would be nice, but the way the layout makes it very difficult for, for me to see.
Yes. If there's an opportunity to do it, that, you know, that sounds you know, and it works, we're able to have the outdoor seating bylaw implemented. Then that would be good. But I understand that currently at this time, it sounds like you don't have a current plan to enable outdoor seating.
Or I don't, I don't know what's being proposed in this regard in Needham, but I know, for example, in Wolfam, what they're doing on Moody Street is they're actually sort of, you know, Great Plain Avenue, then this may not be feasible at all, but Great Plain Avenue is two lanes in each direction plus a parking lane in each direction. You could, in, if the, if you were doing what they're doing in on Moody Street and Wolfam, you would actually shrink it to one lane in each direction. And the the sort of right-hand lane in each direction becomes the parking lane. And what is now the parking lane becomes additional place to see, to sit people, see people, so that you can, people can walk by on the sidewalk and there's still places to, to be seated. But I don't know if that's what people are thinking of in Needham or not.
If you stick, if you stick around to the third item on the agenda, you're going to find out, because we're dealing with that tonight to approve our recommendation for the Warren article. It's not structured in the same way that you're referring to from Wolfam. It's structured a little differently, largely driven in part by use of public space, but also private space. There's a role this select board plays and a role that the planning board plays. And there is a formula of a certain number of percent of, I think it's 30% of the indoor seats would be accessible outdoors. In other words, if you attend indoor seats, then you'd be able to have up to three. If you have 10 indoor seats, you'd be able to have up to three outdoor seats. Otherwise, you need a special permit for more, but we're going to come to that a little later. Marty and Natasha, just before I come to you, I, I just wanted to go back to Mr. Mackin. And just to understand clearly, is, is the current dumpster screened?
It's in the rear of the building. It is screened.
And how is it screened?
So the, the building itself has somewhat of an offset in the rear of the property. And the two cars that park tandem park up to the dumpster. And so it's not visible from even the side of Pickering Street.
Good thing about Google Maps is that it allows us to get in access to, to take a peek at that. So, and Lee, what is the requirement for screening?
Well, in, in the downtown, we've been requiring that there be some kind of wooden screen fence around the dumpsters. So that's what's been required with the other properties in the center. So the dumpsters are actually in a wooden, wooden enclosure with a door. So you don't see the dumpsters.
So that's like in a scenario such as the James or in Cook, when you're out in the back, that you would not really have, be able to have visual access to the dumpster. Is that correct?
That's correct. The dumpsters are placed inside a wooden enclosure with a gate.
So here, if I understand correctly, Mr. Mackin, what you're saying is that it's effectively partially screened by two sides of the structure itself. And it, and it may be visible if there is no other, if there's no car parked in that immediate vicinity. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it's a, the footprint of the building occupies about 95%, 92% of the lot. So it would be difficult to construct a structure and then have the maneuverability to get around it. We would actually, in the case of Mr. Perez, if he's using that dumpster and that's screened on three sides, he would literally have to walk on the neighborhood. Screened on three sides, he would literally have to walk on the neighboring property at twenty Pickering Street. To my property or go down the out the front door of Great Plains Avenue, walk all the way around onto. Pickering Street to access it.
Has there have you had? Any complaints from any of the from the office building next door to you on Pickering? Or any other neighbors of? You know, debris not properly being disposed of?
I've owned the building since twenty fourteen and I haven't had any complaints.
And have you had any issues with others improperly using your dumpster?
I've I've had no issues, even though the Greenfielders nearby haven't had issues with. Patrons or pedestrians walking by or using the dumpster, and that's because you have to walk about. Thirty-five feet onto the property to get to the dumpster.
I understand.
It's not adjacent to the to the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you very much. Marty, do you? Oh, I see Jean.
I just want to follow up on on the dumpster. I'm looking at the certified plot plan. What is the structure that's identified on the plot plan with the initials BH?
So that's the bulkhead. That's an outside entrance to get into the basement.
Oh, bulkhead, of course. So the dumpsters are. Or the the one dumpster that exists now is. Is in the vicinity of the bulkhead or is it way tucked in the back?
That's correct. It's it's adjacent to the bulkhead. It's on the side of the bulkhead.
Okay. All right, just wanted to understand. Okay, those are, I'm all set with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'd like to turn to Marty and then I'll come to Natasha.
I'll pass. I don't have any questions.
Natasha, you are muted. Do you have any comments or questions?
I also Jean asked the questions that I had, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Jeffrey, do you have any questions?
When is the warden coming out for Minecraft? I've been waiting for so long.
Well, that's a good question, but it's not appropriate for the for this particular hearing, so I'll rule that question out of order, but don't take it personally, okay? Very good.
He says, when is the smoothie bars gonna be open so he can come by? That's the question.
So I think, you know, look, it 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 takes a. Okay, don't forget to brush your teeth, yeah? Okay, good boy. It takes a oral hygiene is important in our in this family. I apologize for the disruption. It takes it takes a lot of courage to open a business anytime. And, you know, I I think we're all pretty excited to, you know, to to have another business, you know, in town. And regardless of the outcome, we're going to wish you every success in your business, whether there's a grease trap or not. And I know that my wife and I and my son will be into, you know, enjoy those various nutritious drinks. As we play on the field as Jean's grandchildren do too, perhaps Marty's. Does I I do see that we actually have a a hand up from the public. So Clay, I'm going to ask your your help here. But before I identify that this individual, I just want to be clear that the purpose of me recognizing this individual. And her name is Laura Mayer is specifically to speak only in regards to the matter before us. And the special permit, so provided that's the case, we would be happy to welcome Laura Mayer to ask any question or. Make any comment. Clay, are you able to bring her over, please?
All right, I will bring them over now. If you'll just allow them a moment to populate in as a panelist.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Clay, and Laura, I know it's going to take a second for you to populate over. When you do, we'd ask that you restate your name and your address, please, for the record. And Laura, you are, I apologize, you're muted.
Here we are.
Very good.
So, thank you. Let me just say Laura Mayer and I'm at four eighty-four Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
Yep. This actually is not about the the matter at hand. I just wanted to know about the settings.
The settings of what?
On Zoom, like usually I'm not able to see the population of everybody who's on. I'm only seeing the speaker.
So that's that's. Operation, I can ask Clay to to answer that, but I really would like to return to the hearing, if I may. It's do you have any comments or questions relating to the application before this?
I also look forward to attending and going into that business.
Thank you very much. I apologize, but always nice to see you and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so Clay, if we could move Laura back over as an attendee. We can address her her question after the hearing. I'd like to return to the hearing itself. Does anyone else on the board at this time have any question or comments? And Lee, do you have any question or comments?
No, I have no questions or comments.
So I think at this time, I would probably entertain. Actually, before I entertain a motion to close the hearing, I think we probably would want to direct you the. To draft an affirmative decision. Is that?
I think we should close closer hearing first and then discuss that.
All right, well, then let's go ahead and do that. Can I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so we are closing the hearing. And having closed the hearing now, Lee, shall we direct you to draft an affirmative decision?
That will be fine. I can have it prepared so that you can vote it at the next planning board meeting, which is in October, first meeting in October.
And is that a do we have a date on that?
Um, let me just, I think it's see, I want to say October eight. Let me just open my calendar and verify that.
Or maybe the twelfth?
I thought it was the fifth for some reason.
Okay, I've got to get my calendar up. I'm sorry. I'm working on memory and it's not that's not very good.
I think you're right, Evans.
As it turns out, I'm gonna be at that.
Yes, it's October the fifth. Evans knows very well. October five. Sorry about that.
I'll try to coordinate with my wife so she is not at her book club that night, so that might make things a little easier as well for at least for Paul. Okay, so I'd like to thank Mr. Mackin for coming in and Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez, we wish you the best of luck on every success with your endeavor, and we'd also like to thank Evans as well. And. The hearing is closed and we are now able to move forward with our second item on the agenda. Unless Evans.
Mr. Chair, do you need to do you need to take a vote now to grant the special permit with conditions?
I know, because I'm sorry.
I I I understand that we'll vote the relief and and approve the decision at our subsequent hearing.
But I think it's clear that from our discussion and our our comments. That our planning director is going to draft an affirmative decision in the expectation that it will be approved. But that vote will not occur until we have the decision before us. And it will have the usual conditions, you know, about that that you understand and have outlined in your letters, Mr. Huber, about. Employee parking and dumpster and complying with every requirement of the Board of Health, usual conditions.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Then Clay, are you able to? Remove Mr. Evans, Mr. Mackin and Mr. Perez? It looks like you're already in the process of doing that. Or you guys are welcome to leave the meeting as well. That's another way to do that, if you'd like.
Okay, so he can't do it. I volunteer. But anyway, thank you for every, thank you. Thank you, everybody, and I look forward to it for you guys.
Thank you very kindly.
Good night.
It will be the fifth, correct, yes.
And so what I'd like to do at this time is recognize Ms. Sure, I'm not sure Bonnie, if I've pronounced your name correctly. I will, I will just, for the record, note that we've received correspondence from you. And we're, you know, identifying a circumstance that. That alarmed you about. Removal of a number of trees and we welcome your comments and thank you for coming this evening. You're also muted.
Thank you very much. I'm Bonnie Sure. I live at thirty-seven Richard Road. I love living in Needham. It's been my home for forty-one years. I've taken great pleasure having watched it evolve and it's a place that I happily raise my children. Needham has always preserved its assets and updated its facilities such as its library. Well-respected schools, hospital and modern fire and police departments. During this pandemic, I started really walking around Needham and observing the bustle and building going on. Like any community with limited land and a fabulous location near Boston. And hubs of industry and learning, we have rebuilt and renewed our housing. One of the major practices in town has been to tear down older homes and replace them with new houses. Progress is wholeheartedly welcomed when it also includes updating existing homes. In doing this, we keep Needham very desirable and welcoming to families looking to buy or update in town. I noticed as I looked at tear down building sites that most often the sites were clear cut. Leveled of trees and greenery. This practice, while easy for builders, is bad for Needham. We have to pers- to respect and preserve our green spaces. And not allow the beauty and environmental benefits of older growth trees to be eliminated. In our warming climate and with poorer air quality, the invaluable benefit of trees cannot be stressed enough. The trees also afford a buffer between homes, increase privacy. And help stabilize earth on steeper slopes in town. The trees absorb water and help reduce flooding and mudslides. They remove harmful CO2 from the air and provide oxygen. If it is necessary to take down trees, consideration should be given for replanting on these home sites. We should enact bylaws to protect the trees and make sure there are laws that require builders to do their planning judiciously. I know in the past this protection has been discussed. And I and many homeowners in Needham would appreciate measures being put into place to maintain our green spaces. Whether on public or private land. This type of stewardship is practiced by many of our neighboring towns. Some have bylaws, some arborists, some have tree permits linked to every building permit. Or a combination of rules that assure the preservation of trees. It is in our best interest to safeguard our trees. Just a few years ago, with no bylaw in place to control treatment removal. Our neighborhood alone lost seven acres of trees clear cut to put up nine houses. This is not progress. I hope you will seriously consider revisiting a bylaw that puts limits on builders. Who aren't forward-thinking in their building and strip our home lots of old growth trees unnecessarily. There might be other ways to do this also. It seems reasonable to expect that one property owner should not be able to do building that will cause damage to another property owner. We all pay our taxes and should have protection from negligent building. A builder should not have more rights than an existing homeowner. Needham wants to be regarded as a forward-thinking community that is protecting its trees. When the trees are reduced in number, valuable habitat for animals and birds are lost. Shade is reduced. Having an arborist or an individual overseeing land development in town. Armed with bylaws to back him or her up so builders don't free have free rein. Would be a great start toward making Needham an even more beautiful and desirable town. So what have I learned in the last couple of weeks in my crash course on getting my voice heard on tree issues? My husband and I have talked with several town employees who have generously helped us to see the process. Of how work gets done to change laws or get permits. They filled us in on the surprising amount of consideration that members of the planning and select board. And Ed Olson from Parks and Forestry Division have been given to this subject already. Ed is our closest thing to an arborist and cares deeply about the trees in town. We spoke about a way to save or repopulate trees in town. A few ideas. With better planning when building a new home, a change in the setbacks would stop the house from taking up most of the lot. Which would leave room for trees. With fees paid by builders to put money into a fund to plant more trees. Or with possible reconsidering planting the berms in town, as has been done in the past, another way to add trees. All these changes would help. This could be facilitated by a tree beautification fee. We could add more trees to our parks and fields to increase our green footprint. Another idea would be to encourage more renovation of existing homes, which would allow for more diversity in the community. By just having over one to two million plus dollar properties being built. The town isn't accessible to all. Having homes for young families and downsizing seniors is a worthy goal. In two thousand eighteen, a group of five individuals, which included members of the planning and select board. Took a look at what other towns around us have done to help them formulate a plan for Needham. The selectmen in their two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three goal statement have at least three goals that relate to trees. Livable Needham would include and appropriately regulate sustainable development. Goal six includes some strategies for tree preservation. And goal seven includes developing a climate action plan and a tree strategy. This shows us that the town is concerned and willing to work towards improving how we maintain and increase our trees. Several of my neighbors have already written you to express their concerns and ask for help. This help isn't for us alone. It's for Needham. We all hope you will give careful consideration to our tree request and make it a priority. A few years ago, you were considering a tree bylaw. Please renew your efforts now to do this or take another appropriate action. What is the planning board prepared to do to address or consider our requests with mindfulness of some of the selectmen's goals? What can we, the citizens of Needham, do to promote and support this? Where do we go next? We'd like your guidance and suggestions. How can we encourage builders to plan for environmental considerations? As I've said, this desire on our part is to end destructive removal of trees. We want to continue to live in a town that makes smart choices and has a vision for the community. Please help us to make this possible by reexamining how to protect trees or replace them. Thank you for letting me voice both our concerns and hopes.
Bonnie, thank you very much for bringing this back to our attention. Here you've asked a number of worthy questions. I would, for the record, like to mention that we have received your email. And as you mentioned, we received correspondence from other. and as you mentioned, we received correspondence from others, which have included an email submission from Jenny Small. We've also received an email submission from Stacy Lasberg. We've also received correspondence from Beverly Schwartz. And you're right, the town has previously considered, I've been informed of the town's more recent effort from several years ago. And I understand that it's that there is, it's, it is among a priority with the Select Board as well. I should note that a so-called tree bylaw is a matter of the town's general bylaws and it's not actually a zoning function. And as a result, I believe the Select Board is the Board of Jurisdiction. So we would certainly encourage you and the others that have reached out to us to simultaneously reach out in the same way that you have to the Select Board. And I'm certainly open to comments from the board, from the Planning Board. I would, I, I would probably suggest that that we at the Planning Board Chair Vice Chair level with a Chair Vice Chair meeting with the Select Board, bring it up and discuss what steps are possible. You've identified the idea of establishing a tree restoration fund, a beautification fund that would be in the form of fees. Part of the challenge of this task that the town has to come to terms with is is an enforcement provision. And we have to understand what would have to understand from Ed, as you mentioned, a town staff who effectively deals with this for the town, what staff requirements and what what other materials requirement that the town may have in order to address this, so we know precisely what cost implication there is. And then we have to determine some kind of a funding strategy for it, I would think, which would obviously be through a function of the Select Board and FinCom that it would be a function perhaps of fees that builders pay. And I don't know if there's going to need to be a subsequent, you know, a budget, a budget request to be approved by FinCom and Town Meeting in order to financially support any deficit for the, to cover the costs of the endeavor. It is an important endeavor. The Planning Board as a whole is interested in the preservation of the community, including elements that promote beautification and also contribute towards a safe climate for all of us. So with those comments, I would now welcome any other comments from members of the board. Natasha, do you have any comments?
No, Adam, I think you, you covered what I was thinking. But thank you, Bonnie, for, for alerting us to this and for, for caring about the trees and, and how the, how the town is built so and continues to be developed. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Marty, do you have any comments or questions?
Only to say that although I think you're right that such a bylaw would not be a zoning bylaw and would be not really in our province. I don't know that there's any reason, and Lee may tell me otherwise, I don't know that there's any reason why the Planning Board couldn't advertise and hold a hearing on this topic and see what the issues are, lay them out. It would, if nothing else, help the Select Board, I think, come to terms with it. Obviously they'd have to take it up, but I don't see any reason why the Planning Board couldn't take it up, even if the goal was not to change zoning. Am I wrong about that, Lee?
Well, there's no reason why the Plan Board couldn't discuss it or, or hold meetings to get public comment on it. I think the reason initially, I think the last time around, there was a working group that had representation from different entities that would have actually been involved, who, who actually would have been, been involved in implementing it. So it involved the Select Board, involved the Planning Board, involved the Conservation Commission, it involved people from Parks and Forest, Forestry, people from the Building Department. And it was deemed that the most effective tool was really a change in the general bylaws. And because it touched so many different departments, that the Select Board was really the appropriate entity to take the lead on it. So I think that was the original strategy.
What happened?
It was developed, I think, pretty far along the line and then other priorities came along that caused the town to refocus. But it was, there was, there was quite an effort over, over a number of years. Draft tree bylaws created. The regulations to, to support that bylaw were never really thoroughly flushed out. But the bylaw itself was pretty close to being complete and then other priorities came along.
Okay, fair enough. Life happens. But I, I do think we should lend our voice to try to revitalize this and get it moving again. I think it's a good idea.
So as Vice Chair, Jean, I'll come to you in a second, as, as Vice Chair, I'll report back to, to Paul on this and, and specifically mention your suggestion, Paul, and what I would probably recommend is that that Paul and I at a Chair Vice Chair level discuss with the Select Board and have either our board or their board or collectively hold, you know, hold a public hearing and pick up where the effort was last left off and, and try to, you know, arrive at a, at a solution that works, that works for the town. Jean, did you have any comments or questions on this issue?
Yes, I'm remembering a meeting that occurred within the past two years. It may have been a Chair Vice Chair meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board and excuse me, the person you mentioned, who's our Ed Olson, Ed Olson, I believe, was in attendance. And we were discussing the concepts that might work. And as I recall, we were discussing, you know, if, if a tree is to be removed, that is a healthy tree and a greater diameter than a certain number of inches, either that tree must be preserved or the developer would have to pay into a fund and there would be tree replacement. And it got bogged down on the idea that this would be a lot of work for the, for the town staff. It's similar to, I think, bylaws that other towns have, but it was thought to, to be a lot of work. And I went for that meet, from that meeting, feeling discouraged, feeling that the efforts that you described, Adam, and the committee that had been working on this was told, now we're just not going to do that. So I am encouraged, however, by what Ms. Sure says about something that sounds like this effort's being on the Select Board's goals for two thousand twenty-two. I've looked at those, but I didn't focus on that issue particularly. But if the Select Board really are interested in revitalizing this, I feel certain that the Planning Board would, would, would put energy into it and want to be involved. I just feel that we got discouraged a couple of years ago and decided to lay it down. I, well, Mr. Chair would recognize you perhaps.
Thank you. I apologize. I was muted. Mr. Bonnie?
I'm very pleased by the response tonight. I've never done anything like this before and I'm shaking in my boots, so. But I don't know how much we can afford not to do things. I mean, when we talk about the planet and the climate and all these things, these things can't be put off. We need to get really, we're a smart town. We're really bright here. There are ways to do things. We just have to figure it out. I've got a lot of neighbors that have a lot of suggestions and this is not an unusual block in the town. There are a lot of people, a lot of talent, and we have to figure out a way to take care of these things. Above me on Tudor, there is a house being built right now and it, it comes right up to the back of my house. Thirty-eight trees were taken out of that property, which now will not be between my house and that house up there. Now, many of those had to come out to put in the type of house that this builder envisioned. But unfortunately, in my limited knowledge, at least six trees did not have to come out. There has to be something, some way to hold people responsible for taking old growth trees out that are not in the way of what is being built. We should try to preserve in town. And I don't know if there are even committees made up of volunteers with expertise in the area that could help people like Ed Olson that has lots of knowledge and runs this, the town forest if something could happen, but I sure hope so. And I'm, I'm going to speak out for us, the citizens of this town. If there's anything we can do, please be in touch with us because that would be wonderful.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. And Natasha?
So I have just one thought. I know that an environmental group is being put together as a committee for the town. This could also be part of the mission of that group. Perhaps because I think, I think it's finding where it has its place and where it can be most effective. So it could just be a suggestion for that group moving forward.
I think that's a great suggestion. It is one of the two core priorities for, for the Planning Board. And I think this is an element of it and I think that's a great idea. At this time, we've received a special request from you to, to address the Planning Board. We're grateful for your bringing this up. I think it's a reflection of the success of civic engagement. And thank you very much for, you know, for taking this seriously, for identifying a problem and for being on top of it and bringing it forward to us. And we look forward to, you know, seeing some positive movement as you do and finding a solution because there's no point having a solution that can't actually be enforced. It just doesn't get us anywhere. And it's not something that any of us are interested in providing lip service to. And yet we have the capacity to find a solution that will, that will work. And that's what we're all looking to do to ensure this generation and future generations in town. So thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, we'll probably ask Clay that he may turn you back over as an attendee. And, and at this point, I'd now like to turn to our third item in our agenda, which is our recommendation on the zoning articles for the outdoor seating, Article One, to amend the zoning bylaw. I will note that subsequent in materials, Lee had another stab at the bylaw and she sent us earlier today a further revision. Is that right, Lee?
Yes, and once I was putting together the final for the warrant and writing my, beginning to write the description for it, I, I caught a technical change that I think we also needed to be making at the same time that we're amending Section six point nine. Six point nine of the bylaw was our existing regulations on, on, on temporary outdoor seating. But it was accompanied basically by language in the use tables for each of the districts that enabled that use as a accessory temporary use. And because we are changing, we're actually opening the, the, this opportunity up. Initially, the opportunity for this fast track process was only offered to restaurants with waiter and waitress service. Now we're opening this up to basically all eat-in restaurants. So technically, the sections that deal in the use table that deal with this accessory use also need to be updated to reflect that. So I just added those changes, which are basically, I think, called out in paragraphs K through O, where all I'm doing is modifying the use tables for the zoning districts where this use was previously permitted to make clear that it's now for eat-in restaurants and not just, and not limited to restaurants that have waiter and waitress service. So it was a technical change, so to make sure that the bylaw is internally consistent.
Thank you very much for the thorough diligence in going through that, Lee. There was some discussion about whether or not we expand this to take out only facilities. I did have an opportunity to speak with Katie King and also to the Economic Economic Development Manager, Amy Hilsen. And it seems, it seems as though that during the pandemic, we haven't really had an application for outdoor seating relief from, for instance, Dragon Shaft or Abbott's. And so, so and for Abbott's, I think they found some synergy with the outdoor seating that currently exists for, for Sweet Basil during the day. So there's been a synergy of the time that customers patronize one shop versus the other. So that hasn't really been, hasn't had an adverse impact, so we've seen so far. So I would probably recommend that we continue as, as you've outlined, and if we need to make a subsequent adjustment as a result of our experience going forward, we could do it subsequently. But I think for now, changing it on an eat-in basis for outdoor relief makes a lot of sense. Marty, do you have any comments or Natasha?
No, and I don't think it's going to make much difference, frankly. So.
And Natasha, do you?
No, I don't have any additional questions.
As soon as I saw, as soon as I said Marty and Natasha, Jean, your hand went up. So I apologize, but.
That's all right. I was, no, really, I was just going to say that I agree with you. That's all I was going to say with regard to the takeout establishments.
Well, you know, you know what they say, Jean, fools seldom differ. Having said that, Lee, do you need, do you need a vote for a motion to approve your, your draft this evening and to submit it formally to the Select Board for the warrant?
What I need, we've, it's already on the warrant. So what I need, and I just want to make one clarification. Jean had made a suggestion in my language that I reversed how I, I modify my nomenclature relative to numbering in paragraphs M and in zero, and I'm going to make that change. So the only thing I need tonight from you is basically a motion to recommend adoption of the outdoor seating article in the form I presented to you with the minor nomenclature change that Jean has recommended.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Jean can second it.
Oh, I didn't hear you, Natasha.
Well, I was on mute.
So I, so here's, here's the thing. I think as Chair, I get to play referee here. And I did see Natasha's lips moving before the microphone started and before Jean, I heard you. What's that?
You don't know what she said unless you know what.
You're absolutely right. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that's absolutely valid on that basis. I'm going to give the second to Jean.
Totally fine.
We have, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will come to the vote. Jean?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Natasha?
Hi.
And the Chair is I, unanimous vote to approve the recommendation to the Select Board based on these changes this evening. And thank you to Jean for another once-over to that effect. And having dispensed of that item, I guess we now turn to item four in our agenda, which is the review of applications received for two at-large appointments for the housing plan for two thousand twenty-one and a vote to appoint. So we'll need a motion to appoint individuals, but before we come to that, I'd like to open it up to the board for any comments or questions they have, either in terms of the process or the candidates. The last point that I would like to make before I turn it back over to the board is we received from our Chair, from Paul, a very thoughtful review of the. is we received from our chair, from Paul, a very thoughtful review of the, of the applicants. And we have his comments as well that I can, that we can, you know, discuss as well.
Oh, they, those weren't, you know, I guess it wouldn't be appropriate to circulate them. So I'm not sure. I will.
So I, I, I guess that's right because it was a chair vice chair thing. And so I, I can share some of his thoughts here. But before we do that, do any of you have any particular, do any of you have any comments either or questions on either the process or the candidates? Natasha, I saw you first nodding your head. So I'm going to turn it to you.
I, um, Jean, did, should we talk also about the, the chair?
I think we should. Yes. We haven't yet identified who would, who would chair this, um, this group, um, this working group. And I think at a prior meeting, Natasha and I volunteered to be the planning board representatives. And I think that, I don't know if that actually came to a vote, but I think there was a general acceptance of the fact that the two of us would serve. And so it's a question of who would chair. And it's more of our, the way we structure things. Well, what, what we're hoping is that we can help each other to lead this committee. That the burden is not just on one of us, but that we truly share this and that we actually would have chair, vice chair meetings with our planning staff. You know, with Karen Sinnerberg and perhaps Lee as well, uh, to plan the meetings and so forth as we go forward. Um, and I would very, very much forward to working in that manner with Natasha. And Natasha, I, I believe you said that you're comfortable kind of managing the meetings. And it seems that that's the role of chair. So although we didn't really talk about between us about who would be chair and who would be vice chair, I guess I asked if you would assume the role of chair.
I, I guess the question is somehow Jean made me want to, does volunteer me to be chair? Well, we had discussed, no, we, I think, I don't know if this is allowed, but we were wondering if we could be co-chairs so that we could complement each other. Because I think it's gonna, um, you know, in, in different areas and that we could support each other in different areas. So I'm not sure if that is something that is allowed or do you have to have a chair and a vice chair?
I think ultimately you'll probably need a vice chair. But if you want to structure it as co-chairs, you can try. I think it's probably fine. I don't think that there's a formal way, but Marty, you've got your hand up.
Well, Mark Italy, yep.
I just have a question. Are there some rules that say the plant, one of the planning board representatives has to be chair? What, I mean, is that required?
No, but generally, I mean, the past, past practice has been if the planning board creates a committee to still, to do a study.
Chair it. Yeah.
The planning board chairs the committee. That's just how we've done all the, all of our planning studies in the past. Um, I mean, we could do it. I, I haven't done a co-chair thing. I mean, this doesn't mean we couldn't do it. Well, certainly we could do chair and vice chair and the two of you would basically be running it.
The only reason I ask is because I had assumed, this is the first I've heard of it. I had assumed as most committees, I think, are created that it's very common for the committee members themselves to determine who's going to be chair. But if that's not the case here, that's fine. I, I'm just surprised to hear this.
That's, well, planning studies have always been chaired by planning board members. Um, that's just been the past practice.
I would.
Would you recommend to keep it within the same way that we've been doing it, chair and vice chair or?
Me? Unless you wanted to have a vice chair from the select board. But I, I mean, this has been, this is an initiative led by the planning board. It would make sense that we.
No, I think the two of us want to do it. It's just that we, we'd like to share their responsibility. So it doesn't all fall on one person. And maybe just the chair, vice chair is enough for that.
In the absence of a formal rule, you know, if, if you guys want to do it as a, as a co-chair function, I mean, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
I think either approach would work. Whatever Jean and Jean, I think, I know we talked about this, but I think either approach, whatever approach you, you two feel comfortable with, I think is fine. It, it accomplishes the same goal.
I just want you to know, I, I don't care. You know, I'm sure either one of you would do fine or together you do fine. But at least give some thought to the question if, if it comes up among the other members of this committee. Why are you guys going to be chair and vice chair? You know, what about one of us? I, I just think you should have an answer ready. That's all. Um.
I, I did think about that. I did think if we want a chair, vice chair, should the vice chair be a member of the select board? But then, you know, I've been around the planning board for a long time. I initially was a community member that in the study long 15, 16 years ago that established the downtown overlay districts. And, and then we had this study of the, um, I was on the committee that studied the, um, large house issue and, and we came up with bylaw amendments on that. And so I, I think in a committee like this, we probably don't actually need a vice chair. Uh, we probably just need a chair. But since Natasha and I really think we can support each other by having this kind of role. I, I, and I, I guess I do feel kind of like, well, we should have it be chair, vice chair, just because that's more traditional. That's all.
I, I'll do that. But I think if we want to change it and there's no rules for not changing it, we should do, Jean, what we feel would be best for the committee, right?
Okay, okay. There's no objection and we want to be co-chairs. Yeah, I just, we've been involved in organizations with co-chairs. So.
I have also, and sometimes it works better because sometimes some, someone's out of town and the other person isn't. And it just gives continuity and collegiality kind of to, to it, I think. But. So that was just our recommendation and I think, um, I also.
And Marty are okay with that, that we are co-chairs of this committee will go forward on that basis.
That's, that's.
Paul's going to come back and we're going to change all the rules. We're having coaches.
So having, having come to that point, do, Lee, do we need a motion to appoint Jean and Natasha as co-chairs of the subcommittee?
I think we just need a motion, yeah, to appoint them to the committee in that capacity.
So can it, Marty, would you like to make a motion to appoint Jean and Natasha to the committee and as co-chairs in particular?
If that's what you'd like, I mean, if that's what they want.
Marty doesn't feel comfortable or.
Oh, I, I mean, this is all a surprise to me. That's all. But if that's the way you want to do it, fine. I, I just, what I feel uncomfortable about is if there's people in the committee who are going to say, you know, we want to be chairman, you know, we think one of the at large people should be chairman. I don't know. And people may object.
What about?
Being chair.
Marty, what if we did this? What if they were chair? They're sharing the chair as co-chair. And certainly there could be a vice chair. That's either, you know, that can be any member of the committee. And that committee can establish among themselves who would be the vice chair. So effectively.
I don't want to make it so complicated. These two, Natalie and Jean, are going to be the planning board representatives on this committee. If you need, first, let's do that first. Do you want a motion to that effect?
Yes, please.
Then you have it. Okay. So moved.
And I, as chair, I'm going to second that motion. And then we'll come to any discussion. Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Jean?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Natasha?
Hi.
And the chair is I, that motion carries unanimously.
And I'm happy to make whatever other motion you need, but I don't think you need one. I mean, when you have your first meeting, tell people it's the planning board's committee. It's our initiative. We're going to run the committee. If you get no pushback, that's the end of it. If you do get pushed back, then I guess we can talk about it again or you, you could work it out. But I'm not sure you need another motion, but if you want it, I'm happy to give you one.
I, I, I feel more comfortable heading into this role with the planning board's support of a, of the structure of having a co-chair, having co-chairs and that we are the co-chairs.
All right.
Rather than leaving it up in the air.
Motion.
Marty, make the motion, please.
Here's the motion. Natasha and Jean be co-chairs of this committee.
So I second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll come to the vote. Jean?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Natasha?
Hi.
And the chair is I, that passes unanimously. And, uh, and so now we can move to the discussion about the other applicants at large. And does anybody have any specific suggestion on whom to appoint for these two candidates? Yeah, Marty?
Let me, let me start by saying, before I get to that, and I will have recommendations. Let me say that I know it takes a long time. Would have been nice if I could put a face to a resume, have a chance to ask a few questions, maybe. So I don't know any of these people at all. And so all I'm doing is looking at their resumes, which is a lot better than nothing. But it's not the best way to go about it, it seems to me. I think almost all of these people, many of them, look terrific on a resume. This is, this is a group of resumes that is very impressive and says to me, boy, we have a lot of people in this town, very talented, a lot of great background. Wouldn't it be nice if we can find a number of ways we can use some of these people for various initiatives? Uh, because I was really impressed. Second thing I want people to know in that vein, if any of these people are listening, that I'm only on the planning board for six more months. I'm not going to run again. And so anybody who wants to mention to any of these people that there's a great way for you to get involved in town, in the town, you want to be on the planning board, it would be great to spread the word. And if anybody wants to talk to me about what it means and how much time is involved, I'd be happy to talk to any or all of them. Okay? So having said those two things, I found it really hard to sort of rank these people in, with my preferences, really hard. But I'm going to give you three names. Okay? Unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to give you three names that I, I'd say are at the top of my list. But the ones following that, there's several following that, that I could be happy with too. In no particular order, Amanda Berman, Andrew Cohen, and Emily Cooper. Of the three that I would like to be at the top of the list.
Thank you. Uh, I will say that we've heard from, from Paul, or I've heard from Paul and, uh, again, very similarly, uh, very similar comments to you that we've had a very robust application. Uh, and we've had extraordinary candidates come forward. And in no particular order, Paul is recommending Amanda Berman and Andrew Cohen as well. I, the next hand that I saw up, it was yours, Jean. So Jean, which, what are your, who are your top two or three?
Yes, I agree so much with Marty that this is a wonderful group of, of applicants. And anyone, any two of them would be very, very good on the committee. Um, but I went through their resumes with certain ideas in mind about what we need. And that led me to two persons. And I'll explain my, my reasons. Oscar Mertz is an architect. He, he, he has been active in equal justice needum. And I've observed him in that capacity to be a really good team person. You know, a person who listens to others, doesn't think he knows it all. But, but at the same time, and also a hard worker, when he says he's going to look into something and research it, he does it. And he brings back knowledge. Um, I think he would be excellent on the committee. And I only met him in person, I think, for the first time at a backyard gathering last weekend. But before that, all of my contact with him was on Zoom. But I would very much like to work with Oscar. And the other is a person who I don't know. I, I, I've never met her. Rhonda Spector. And the reason I picked her is that I think to have an understanding of how affordable housing is financed is something that would be wonderful to have at the table. Um, and she was, um, she's now the director of real estate development for two, to, uh, an affordable housing developer, two life communities. And what she's particularly doing is leading the lead certified, well, excuse me. She's, um, the development is to be leads certified, but her role is leading this development of a 10 million headquarters for two life communities. And she goes on on the other, um, what she did on the refinance and rehabilitation of 209 unit affordable housing community. Very, very excellent experience. She also was a vice president of planning and development for mass development. So she knows how the state agencies work, how they provide funding. And she was an economic development officer for the town of Brooklyn. So she knows how towns work. She just seemed to bring so much background in it to this. You know, kind of like humanity, I hesitate to recommend somebody who I've never even met and, you know, but I just thought she was great, would bring a lot. The ones that you spoke of, Amanda Berman, I, I have met via Zoom, Amanda Berman. And of course, she's, she's very well experienced and she, and particularly in her role in the city of Newton. Uh, but I wonder if the skills and leadership that she would bring is very duplicate of what our own Karen Sonnerberg will bring to us. And, um, you know, I really am looking for somebody who has that finance experience and that development experience from our community members. So, um, was it Cohen? Mr. Cohen, um, is he the one, excuse me, um, Lee, who did serve on our housing authority?
Yes, I think he served on the housing authority at one point.
Yeah. Um, I'm still not clear on, the housing authority hasn't yet said what they want their appointee to be.
Yeah, yes, we did. We got it. It's Ed. I'm going to be bad on this last name.
Oh, Shidler.
Shidler. Okay, yes.
Right. He happens to be a neighbor of mine. Okay, now I know it would be Ed. Okay, um, you know, I'm, one is torn because I very much want Oscar to be on. I think Rhonda Spector brings a lot. But the other one, two, three people who've been mentioned by Marty and by Adam and Paul, you know, I, they'd be good too. So I turn to Natasha.
So I, I agree. I mean, I'm so, I was pleasantly surprised at how many applications or how many we got and, and the quality of the and, and the breadth of like different experiences of, of all the different applicants. Um, the ones that stood out for me were Oscar Mertz. The ones that stood out for me were um Oscar Mertz um and Emily Cooper. And then, but but I had four, then I also thought about Rhonda Spector for the mass development experience and all of that, and then Amanda Berman for because she's the Director of Housing and Community for Newton um redevelopment, so.
Natasha, who was the first person, I apologize?
Emily Cooper and Oscar Mertz are the two that, to me, I thought could bring something different to the table from the other, from the others. But I thought that Rhonda Spector sounded very interesting as well because of her mass development experience. And I'm, and Amanda Berman, of course, has a lot of experience, I don't know if it's um duplicative, uh but I, my sense on this, because we got so many applications for so many qualified people, is that I would like to meet that, you know, maybe select the top four or something to that effect and interview them so that we can give a chance to those that we don't know, to see who the best candidate would be.
So on that point, Lee, when are you anticipating the first meeting occur?
October twelfth.
So we have a, we have a little, and we um if I remember correctly, we've already have the, I I was pulling it up now. We have appointments from uh the Board of Health, Council on Aging, the Finance, uh Finance Committee. We're waiting for appointees from the uh Parks and Rec and from the Housing Authority.
We got the Housing Authority, and so Park and Rec is the only one that's outstanding, and I'm not sure they're gonna appoint.
So, so we have the School Committee CPC, two from the Planning, two from the Select Board, which is great. And um so it's just these two member-at-large positions, correct?
Correct.
So shall we set? So what I would probably recommend that we do then is our co-chairs of the committee, I would recommend that we set up a meeting between Jean and Natasha, together with Emily, Oscar, Amanda, uh and Andrew Cohen.
About Rhonda Spector.
And, and Rhonda.
And Amanda Berman.
I I I thought I said Amanda, so just to be clear.
And Emily Cooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then, and then you can report back to us based on your interviews, and ideally, those interviews would are, would happen. I'd let, I'd like to see you. Our meeting is October five, and then you wanna start the first meeting when?
The twelfth.
So that only gives, so that gives a week. I guess that's not so bad, so I guess, you know, as long as you are able to meet with those five candidates, and obviously you can do it by Zoom, and then report back to us, uh then we can resolve on our October fifth meeting which of the, you know, candidates, you know, uh you recommend, and we'll appoint them at that time. And uh and that way you can continue on track for the October twelve meeting of this, of this Select Committee. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and Adam, did you have, and uh, did you have any thoughts on the candidates?
I did, Natasha, thanks for asking. I, I um I found it encouraging and honestly surprising at how many qualified candidates we had in Needham alone for this. I don't think it's easy, there were several candidates that stood out, among others, for their professional expertise, their body of knowledge and work, some of which, like you're saying, for instance, uh you know, both of you have mentioned, you know, Oscar as having uh, you know, experience in uh in urban planning as an architect. That's one field of expertise and 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 I, and Andrew Cohen, as you know, deals with social services and has another very unique perspective and is also an attorney, although we certainly don't need necessarily attorneys on on the, on the committee in and of itself, except for that individual, that individual brings another perspective that I think can help inform and shape really good affordable housing for the town of Needham, so it is, I found it very difficult. I myself had been, I uh saw particular skills and strengths in Amanda and Andrew and Emily. And yet, I defer to, you know, to the judgment of our co-chairs. And that's why I I am recommending that you set up any, that, you know, obviously, Lee, with your help and with Alex's help, to set up an interview for our co-chairs with Amanda, Andrew, Emily, Oscar, and Rhonda. So that would be the shortlist. And from there, you know, Natasha and Jean, you can you know, re- recommend to us on the fifth, and we'll make an appointment at that time. I, I know that we wanted to have on this committee you know, from, you know, a representative from effectively equal justice Needham, and and you had identified yourself as you know, Jean, that candidate who can serve that function too. Uh and I think, uh Natasha, are you also on equal justice Needham?
I'm on Newari, and so is Marcus, who's representing the Select Board.
Right.
Oscar is part of equal justice Needham as well, just to.
That's right, so we, so we, I I'm, I'm heartened and encouraged by the breadth of representation already going into this Select Committee, so that's my recommendation. Lee, do you need a, a, a?
No, I mean, I I just wanna make sure I'm clear, there are five people, there's Oscar, Mertz, Emily Cooper, Rhonda Spector, Amanda Berman, and Andrew.
Cohen.
Cohen, so there's five people.
Yes, there are five.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have it, I have it right, thank you.
Natasha, was there somebody else you mentioned when you were speaking, I wasn't sure you correctly noted people, you were.
It was Emily and Oscar, and then I was also intrigued by Rhonda, that I've never met, and um, and then Amanda Berman has good qualifications, but I think it would be great to speak to all of them.
So you're, you're in the same direction as others, yes, okay. Well, we'll have to oh, work out a time, um, I, I'm, I'm not available Friday of this week.
I'm not available either, yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna recommend that you guys take care of that offline.
All right, of course.
Marty, do you have a comment?
Yeah, can I be part of that interview committee, or can't have three, Lee?
Well, we'll, we'll just, we'll post a meeting, gonna be a meeting. Quick one, and when three members will be, if three of you are present, needs to be posted as a meeting.
Is that okay, Jean and Natasha, if I attend?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I'd like to do that, okay.
All right, then, then that means we have to post it, and we have a timeline uh for posting that we have to comply with.
Right, so I'll let, the goal is to get this done maybe next week. And and we can coordinate on a day.
All right.
And it can be, you know, if if it works for you, you know, whatever works best for you, in the evening or even a morning, whatever.
I I have to have it uh during the day, uh when the children are in school, that we're taking care of. I'm afraid I have to do that this week. So next week I'm more free, but I realize we have to get it done this week.
Well, I know, I say, I I was gonna do it next week.
Can I?
Next week, oh, okay.
It's, it's already, it's already Tuesday, I, if I have to post a meeting, I can't, the first day I can now do it is Friday, and one of you can't do it on Friday, so we're into next week.
Yeah, okay, okay, then, I'm back next week, so, okay.
And I would also recommend, I mean, we already have all their information, it's just to have a quick, you know, put a face to it. So maybe even like fifteen, twenty minutes per person, just to be able to, just a quick.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try to schedule them all fifteen minutes apart, and we can talk about a time when.
That would be great.
Okay.
Marty, thank you, Marty, thank you for uh for volunteering to participate in that interview process as well.
Marty wants to be the third co-chair, I can just tell.
No, no, I just wanna also see their faces and.
I agree with you, I agree, it's hard, you know, when there's so many great candidates, we really want to, to, you know, meet the ones who feel are the strongest at the moment.
Yeah, and I truly, I wasn't joking when I said it, I I think it's a fabulous candidate pool.
I will, I I I also just wanna mention what you, what you spoke about at the very beginning of your remarks, Marty.
Yeah.
That I, that this really is an opportunity, you know, for individuals to demonstrate their, you know, knowledge, skill, and interest in serving the town. And uh, you know, and you're, and I I very much appreciate your being accessible to others who may, through this process, determine, you know, that they're inspired to run for the Planning Board, so.
Well, I kind of view that as part of the job, frankly, try to help get the next person in place.
That's great.
Well, I think we should all do that.
Yes, agreed. So, Lee, uh unless we have anything, any other motions or other actions for this item, I I would just dispense with it and move on to the next one, I think we've covered, any other action from us?
No, I think we're good, thank you very much.
Very good, so at this point, I would now like to uh uh turn to the minutes. Jean, uh you had some uh, some uh input on.
Yeah, I just had, on one of the sets of minutes, I had a question, I think it's simply a mistake. But on the minutes of uh June twenty ninth, on page three, it's, it says, um, let's see, what what are we talking about here?
A motion was made.
Wait a minute, the subject is the Amendment to Major Project Site Plan Needham Rate Gateway Existing Development Regarding Request to, or amend the decision to allow all the uses, allowed by rider by special permit in the zoning district. Remember, this is a piece of property on the other side of Route one twenty eight. And uh the permit that had been granted was very restrictive in the type of uses that were allowed. And they came before us to amend that permit so that a um, a wider range of uses could be allowed. And it, and on page three, right near the end, there's a statement that is presumably quoting Mr. Alpert. Mr. Alpert stated he would remove convenience stores. I, I think there's some, there's something about this that doesn't seem quite right, and before that, it says, Mr. Man, and he's the representative, the app applicant, I think, stated that he does not want convenience stores removed. He does not want, all right, the applicant does not want convenience stores removed because that's too controversial. The abutters would would be very upset about that, so then you have Mr. Albert stated he would remove convenience stores? I think it should say would not remove convenience stores. What is your memory or any other person's memory of this, uh Lee, do you think that the word not should be put in there?
I think it's probably not, but I don't have a clear memory of that, if you want, I can listen to the tape, um, or we can just delete the sentence.
I would rec, I would recommend that, I uh, I thank you for volunteering that. We then, there was a motion made and unanimously voted to deny the relief requested and replace that with sections, with revisions to section three point three that eliminated the prohibition against banks, video stores, pharmacies, convenience stores, and athletic merchandise stores.
There you go, convenience stores, Lee, I do think that needs to be listened to again.
Okay, I, we can listen to it, make sure.
We'll put off acceptance of those minutes until that is is listened to again. So uh I move that we accept the minutes um with the edits shown of the um Ju- July fourteen, two thousand twenty one, when you would be.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll come to the vote, Jean.
Hi.
Marty.
Hi.
Natasha.
Hi.
And the chair uh votes aye, that's these minutes of July fourteenth are unanimously approved. And having dispensed with the minutes, G, uh, Lee, are there any other uh correspondents?
No, I believe that's it.
No, Lee, there is, you know, um, the request on the part of the Needham Diversity Initiative, which is a longstanding organization in town. I don't know if it's a town-appointed board, is it nearly, or is it like a it's an association of persons? What they do is they put on an event every year, um and they put on, I think, more than one event during the year focused on uh diversity. And um and with that, they're looking, they're going to have a program. And they sent a flyer about it, I hope it was distributed.
I think it was in, wasn't that in last week's?
It was in last week's packet, that's right.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought this week's packet, that's why I didn't catch it.
It's, it was, it's what's called their um annual uh Needham Diversity Summit, and it's gonna be on Sunday, November uh fourteenth. And um the focus is let's see, uh, there's gonna be a speaker who's a Director of Social Work at Simmons College. And
Well, they wanted that you.
Wanted somebody to talk about housing in a breakout group, a breakout session, and the subject would be housing in Needham. So the person would not be expected uh to make a presentation to the entire summit, but they're gonna break into breakout rooms, and they're looking for somebody who's willing to lead a breakout room. So I'm willing, I I just felt that it should be something that's brought before the board, in case somebody else wants to do it.
Did we talk about this at the last meeting and decide that the committee was gonna make that choice? I can't remember, maybe my memory's not right.
What committee, our committee, right?
Yeah, the housing, yeah, the the committee we're fun, we're, that we're creating.
I remember that, I recall that being the case too.
All right, then I'm bringing, bringing it before our own committee. I I don't know, that seems to get kind of complicated, isn't it?
I think that's what, what, that's what we talked about last week, if you wanna change it, that I, you know, let's, let's talk about it, but.
Uh, the, the woman got back to me again and said, have you decided, you know, are you gonna do it, will you do it? And I just don't wanna put her off too long.
Well, you're the, you, you're a co-chair, probably there's really no reason why you and Natasha couldn't do it at this point.
We could, we join it and do it together if we want to, I don't know if Sunday afternoon is free, but um I would make a special effort to do this, because I support, and I'm, I'm not involved, but I do support Needham Diversity Initiative, and to help them with their program, I'd be glad to do it, so. And if Natasha wants to join in, we'll do it together, we, we can talk about that, if that, if that is all right with the board. All right.
Any other uh reports from other board members, and Lee, do you have any other reports?
Do you have a question, did we decide something on the citizens petition about ADUs? What did we decide?
Not yet, we haven't decided anything yet. Sorry, recall, we said we were gonna make a recommendation.
At a town meeting, we, we, we would take it up in October.
Oh, all right, okay. Next time then, okay.
Does any other member have any other reports to make? And Lee, do you have a report?
Well, I guess, um, I just wanna tell you that I haven't received anything yet on Oak Street for the temporary occupancy permit on the revised drawings. So I'm still waiting, we're supposed to have it at the end of the week after our last meeting, and I still have nothing. Um, and I, I may have to involve you in a, in, in, in a project they're doing, they're putting um some capacity in for electric vehicles at PSAB. Um, and I had originally approved this um upgrade um as, as a insignificant change to my policy, but now there's some issues, and they're gonna have to, they wanna bring in overhead wires as opposed to undergrounding it and and adding a transformer, so I'm trying to work that out with Hank, to see if we can't get everything underground, so that because that's the standard we apply on all of our private, our private developers, um, so that, that may show up or input from the board at some point, if we can't resolve it. That's all I have, right?
Marty, offline, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that because you had a visceral reaction that begs my interest.
I don't think you would want to hear my thoughts.
So we can, we can pick that up another time. So unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Seconded by Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Jean?
I.
Marty?
I.
Natasha?
I.
The chair votes aye. We are, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for indulging my son as well.
Oh, he's so sweet.
He was great, yeah. Okay, good night.
Good night, everyone.